Seven o'clock.
Recording in progress.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, this is a notice of a council meeting. You are hereby summoned to attend the meeting of Hemsworth Town Council to be held in the main hall, Hemsworth Town Council Community Centre, Wenshaw Road, Hemsworth, commence at seven P M on thirteen October twenty twenty-two for the purpose of transacting the following business. So, also, it's the first meeting since the Queen Elizabeth passed away, so if we could, we all have some room for a minute's silence. Item two, apologies for absence, to receive apologies for absence, and to consider and approve the reasons for absence on...
Councilor Eccles and Councilor Mitchell.
Item three, declarations of interest, councils should disclose curie or non-curie interests in any items on this agenda. Item four, public question time, to receive questions from members of the public. If you could just put your hand up, I'll come to you and then we'll get our questions answered.
I'd just want to ask a question, please, about the Hemsford Town Council news letter. It seems we've still got a problem actually communicating with residents of Perkishness, especially regarding information that's actually vital to the public at the minute. I came down on Monday and actually had to get sixty copies, which I've distributed myself to residents on Springvale Rides. I apologise to any of those Sussex and Dorset clothes and Woodlands, I didn't have enough for everyone to have one. Since I've dished them out, people have been coming and asking, Julie, why have we missed this brass concert? Why didn't we know anything about it? I believe you've actually employed somebody to distribute over twelve thousand of them to the community. Within the last hour, posts have been put on, asking the community who has actually received them. There are nobody from stretching from Fitzwilliam, Kinsley, Hemsworth. Loads of posts have just gone on, we've got one on Springvale Rides, we've had one on... Yes, they have, because I did sixty on Monday. So can you tell me, please, who this councillor's paid to distribute the twelve thousand leaflets? And still why has nobody had one? Therefore, they're not knowing about all information on events that's happening? That's why they're not turning up? I've also had to stand, which coincidentally, Vicky, well, I'm talking to someone outside Tesco being asked, what's this thing that's a warm bank? Well, if you get your notice board up quicker, instead of having a meeting to discuss them on a meeting, to have an agenda to discuss them on an agenda, and then send an email in. So I'm asking councillor, why has this community not been notified? Who is responsible? Who have you paid to distribute twelve thousand newsletters that has not gone out? Thank you.
Right, Julie, well, I weren't aware that we'd got a company to distribute them because in the recent years, ground staff have done that, they've circulated. But I know you're not the first to complain, Julie, because obviously we've heard other people complaining about these newsletters, which I was obviously going to tell a word with Alan tonight about. But if Alan could just fill you in, because I know nothing about it. Like I said, these have always been printed in-house. Oh, no, sorry, not always. They've gone to DC Print and they've always been distributed by ground staff. And that's what should have happened this time. I don't know who's authorised for a company. Alan, if you could just...
Yeah, in the past, we've had years and years, but it makes you... Sometimes it was Saffler and sometimes it was Coonies, and this year it becomes it. So if they've not been delivered, then we'll all look into that.
Yeah, but Alan, did you want to counsel? But do you think, but should it go to councillor, to allow us to make that decision where we do it in-house? Or we get a contract and spend money?
We're not standing here, Adam, while we're not done.
Just a minute, Alan, I'm asking Alan.
Over the years, it's been well sometimes, sometimes it's been staff, sometimes it's been a company. But it's pros and cons, because if you use a company, you're not taking staff away from their work. It could be, you know, it's potato for tart, I mean.
Well, you know, this was, I mean, the job seems a bit odd, so, you know.
Yeah, you still haven't answered the question, who was the company?
I've probably, I don't know, I can't remember.
Can we just, you know?
You can remember, you can just go to our... Can we get that information, Alan?
Can I update on notice boards as well?
Update on notice boards, Alan. As you know, it got passed last committee, and I'm afraid that's the policy and procedures of the council. This is what has to happen for things to happen, unfortunately. They have to come to council to make the decision to do it.
So we're in a forge to throw...
No, we can't want to do that, I weren't aware that we was...
Well, you better get us all seated on it, yeah.
No, just saying, that time...
Oh, I don't find it, well, I don't.
I don't either. That time when they were all printing, for one lots of posters, weren't they? And they ended up getting no two piles.
Those are the leaflets from back there now to do it.
They got dumped, it just piled them on top of people's streets.
We got them leaflets about now when they were chugging down.
Are we just going to ask questions or are we just going to postpone to agenda?
We can't ask, we can't, we've got last question, and we've got to be allowed to ask questions.
Well, I can't help it, people are just talking and coming in.
I've got my hand up, but I'd like to ask a question, please.
Well, I'll take your question, but any more people that are speaking out, I will just move to normal agenda.
Well, that's normal practice, isn't it? Nobody has to go, it is.
Sorry, I have to stop you there, because it's not. We have had question time running nearly half an hour or more. It's only because of disruption in this public that we have to now limit it to fifteen minutes so we can progress with the council meeting, because that's what it is, a council meeting. Can I have your question, please?
Yes, we can. I'd like to ask, who makes the decision whether the leaflets are done in-house or whether you're paying somebody to distribute them? Who makes that decision?
As I've just said before, certainly, well, obviously, I've been a councillor. We've had grounds maintenance, we've had them printed at DC Print, grounds maintenance, as long as, as far as I know, everybody's more or less got them. But I didn't know about this company. I just said to Alan, why has it not come to council? And Alan's just given answer, sometimes to do it in-house, sometimes to don't. That's something for a later day for us to talk with Alan.
My question, my question was, who makes the decision whether they're delivered in-house or by company? Who makes that decision?
This time would have been me.
Right, no, do you need authority to do that, or can, you know, is your job give you the responsibility to make that decision?
Yeah, the council decides on the newsletter, the stuff that you've put together, it goes to be printed, and then it gets distributed, either by ourselves or by company.
How much work, really?
Some councils, like a donation, pay a few hundred pounds to local scouts and they deliver that sort of thing, so.
Alan, so can we get the company that's supposed to deliver these? And obviously, and please come and get on this tomorrow, because we're not paying for leaflets that have not been delivered, and obviously the public not being informed of what events are taking place. And I'm afraid this company needs looking at. Is there any more questions, Lynne?
Okay, this one's actually on behalf of Carol Whitehead, who couldn't make it this evening. She's asked me to ask the council to look at this. We found out at the funding committee meeting on Tuesday night that the memorial garden in Kinsley actually belongs to Hemsworth Town Council. Apparently, the developer of the new housing gifted it to the council.
Not as far as I am aware, it belongs to Wakefield, Lynne.
Wakefield say it's yours. Apparently Fitzwilliam is theirs, Kinsley is yours. All the question was, if you're not sure about that, could you please look into it? But can we get it tidied up and the railings painted before Remembrance Day, which is the eleventh of November?
To be fair, Lynne, that usually happens anyway. It does happen anyway, I know. Grounds maintenance is a priority. But going back to, as far as I am aware, and that's through Alan, because I've asked the question regarding keys and stuff, you've always said it's Wakefield, Alan.
Yeah, it's as far as I'm aware, it's Wakefield, because coincidentally, a few weeks ago, we contacted them about Remembrance Sunday, about two things, one, to make sure it's tidied, and two, to make sure it's open, because he's actually locked it in. And they've got the key for it, which would indicate that it's their land and same as Fitzwilliam. Traditionally, we have ourselves, even if it isn't our land, we tidy it up in time for Remembrance Sunday. But my understanding is that the land belongs to Wakefield.
I've got two keys, but there's a lot of holes.
We were told specifically that that piece of land was gifted to the council when the new, because it belonged to the church, apparently. And when the developer built the houses on the church, that bit of land was gifted to Hemsworth. Wakefield were quite adamant about that, because they're sorting out the Fitzwilliam garden, but they can't sort the Kinsley one out, because it don't belong to them. So there may be a communication thing.
And I just asked Maxine, Maxine, you said you've got two keys, we're struggling to get a key.
Well, nobody asked me. I did it last year, you told them, you've got... I told Alan last year I had keys, yeah, you did.
Well, not only that last year, because I know that worked.
But nobody's asked me this year.
Have we got a key now, Alan?
No.
I've got a key, Alan. Last year, it was still going to be one.
Right, is there any more questions? Yeah, I'll come to you. I'll come to you in a minute. It's only question time, yeah.
Right, my question is, in the explosion, item twenty-one, the burn all right. What, there's lots of things on social media, so people are saying that Quadback's gone and saved. Are you in a position to actually say what has been taken? Because as a resident, I think we should know what's been taken. And also, you've asked me previously, when I attend pack meetings, if I can highlight things to the police and report back to you. So can you do that so that when I attend a pack meeting, I can highlight that and bring it to the retention?
Well, you're absolutely right, there is things going off, there is things going around on Facebook. A lot of lies and innuendos and irresponsible and who's not, totally, totally.
Well, this gives you the opportunity to clear that up, whether it is.
Public, and that's the client decides what goes into person, after person public.
It will be public in due course, just not tonight, though.
No, we're just going to get to that, Alan, we'll get back in due course. So, right, we're just going to round to the next question.
Wakefield Mets have always done the mainest body memorial. Now, whether that's all, I don't know.
I just know that Alan did it last time, but...
Why don't we just do it, though?
Well, we do, that's what I'm saying.
Sounds like we need to do it, so we do it, and let me think, it's ours, fair enough. Sounds like it's ours.
It's still working anyway, so, you know. So we're going to move on to the, we're going to move on to the next item, which is item five, recorded votes, as coming in number two-six-two, twenty-one-twenty-two, to consider which items on the agenda will have a recorded vote, or we can say at the time, the bottom recorded.
The council has requested all items have a recorded vote.
Fine. Item six, town council meetings, to approve the minutes, the council meeting is held on eighteenth of August twenty-twenty-two. So we've got to move at a second, then. If we aren't, we can't pass without approval.
Move, yeah.
We've got a second, then. Item seven, committee and subcommittee meetings, to adopt the meetings of committees and their respective subcommittees as follows. Committees, so we'll do our, we'll just move them. So leisure and recreation, twenty-eighth September twenty-two, finance, twenty-eighth September twenty-two, policy and planning, twenty-eighth September twenty-twenty-two. Can we have a move, then? Yeah, so obviously, we need our motion cards, that's what you press, so can we? All in favour? Yeah. Item A, a council payment, to confirm the fairness of account and prove the finance committees meetings on twenty-eighth September twenty-twenty-two. Can we have a second, then? All in favour? Item nine, new council, to welcome the new council of the Hemsworth South Ward, and to consider appointing to any of the council standing committees. Well, I propose that we use on all committees. If you want to go on committees again, and welcome to the Hemsford Town Council.
Thank you very much.
Also, as well, you've got the new deputy town clerk, who's sat in the front.
Andrew.
Andrew, I would say Andrew, because I know they call him that to be serious. But Andrew, so welcome to the council, Andrew. And we'll be seeing you in Alan's chair, and Alan's, yeah, yeah, leisure and recreation. Item ten, semi-final football fields, long-term future, to consider requests from Hemsworth Terriers F C to secure exclusive use of the site for the long term to enable them to obtain external funding. We do have somebody from Terriers, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you looked into this, Alan, for Hemsworth Terriers? Have you spoke to anybody?
Well, we met with them a few weeks ago, and we're kind of, well, pretty sure they'd like to have a fifty-year lease, because that will enable them to get various external funding. The town council doesn't have the power to do that with a lease, so you would have to go to Wakefield Council for them to consider it. If that's what the council wants to do, this council could then write to Wakefield Council in association with the Terriers to put that request to them.
Yeah, definitely.
That's if the council wants to do that.
Yeah, so it's not our decision, obviously, now it's Wakefield, so I think we need to be well supported as much as we can, but at the end of days, Wakefield Council's decision for the term of the lease.
No, definitely put it forward from us.
What are the implications for any other teams that want to use that pitch, then?
That's it.
They won't be able to use it.
Do all the people, other people don't use it, don't they?
No, it's just the Terriers. I'm getting everyone but Terriers.
That's it, yeah, I'm getting mixed up, right, yeah. So again, it's just the Terriers.
You've got somebody wanting to talk to you, do you?
Well, obviously, it could be, because it's about the, you've come to special for that cell.
Yeah, can we just correct the name? It's West End Terriers F C, not Hemsworth Terriers. That's his former name of the club, we're now West End Terriers F C.
Thank you for that.
That's brilliant, yeah.
Right, so, yeah, can we put that to a halt? Yeah, are we all in favour? Item eleven, events panel, to consider setting up an events panel to suggest ideas for the council events.
This is council head's suggestion, if it's approved, I'll give you a panel, or for a minute.
Sorry, it's council head's suggestion to set up this panel, so a commitment community to discuss ideas for future possible events. So if approved, we need to know who's going to be on the panel, but yeah, suggest three or four, something like that.
Definitely going to be approved.
I thought that we could invite some of the public into our panel and make it proper community thing.
Yeah, that's what we want.
But in May next year, we've got...
Right, so we'll take a vote, then, are we all in favour? We need to, we need to say if we're gonna, yeah, well, are we all in favour?
I have to ask a question first, what, are you thinking, like, setting up a panel and then they come back with ideas?
And then, I mean, I'm not, a minute, it's all Shaun and Elliot and they're all doing it all.
They can implement it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to...
I just think community wants to be involved.
Of course they do, yeah. You need to get community involved.
The community are involved, because we have Ellen, and that's got a good, a good circle of people around that she, they get involved. And that's why things happen at Christmas in a bonfire in this community centre. But listen, I'm in favour of it, I don't mind. So we have approved it anyway, we just need a panel.
Anybody like to be on panel?
Yeah.
Well, we'll just, we'll just...
We'll all check.
Anybody like to be on panel?
No, wait a minute, we just, we're going to pick councillors and then you can invite the public or whatever wants to come. So, who wants to be on panel?
Well, I'll be on anyway, I'll be on it, yes.
We've got three.
And then public, come on, there's some are public, so I'll be on it.
Just see, once you have a meeting about it, it can go on notice board, whether we get them up, it could go on the internet, and public can be invited in to it, all right? So they're all one two.
Oh, yeah, definitely, Shaun and Elliot want to be on it, yeah.
Item twelve, health and safety, multiple missions, to consider setting up multiple missions to assist health and safety good practice.
As councillor, it's a suggestion, Madam Chair, to have multiple mission cards to help reinforce good practice in health and safety.
Well, in my opinion, don't we need cards to put up for people? Well, if you, what are you talking about? Where are you talking about?
I'm talking about staff, public. What multiple missions is actually, is monthly things where the, the concentrate on health and safety, they have to...
Yeah, well, we pay health and safety, we get...
You don't pay health and safety, health and safety is ours.
We get, we get people in from Wakefield, such as, obviously, down at the water park. We get, we actually pay for that.
It's part of good practice, of many business of...
I just don't think we need cards to tell them, they've got certificates, they know what they're doing, they know the health and hygiene.
It's just every three years, every three years, you want just to go through this health and safety, this is what you're doing. This is what you're doing at the moment.
No, we have a...
They have a standard training every three years. What I am suggesting is that every month, they just roll out slip tricks and balls, and stuff like that, and that's what... No, we don't go in accident book, if he's stopping before he... What are you lying to me for?
Because you're pulling your face.
Because I want to pull a face, don't you?
I'm not having your face.
You know what, I apologise, because every, every meeting, this is what we get. Every meeting, it's embarrassing.
You're just pulling faces.
It's embarrassing, it's embarrassing.
You are embarrassing, I'm not going to sit here, you're pulling face at me.
We want health and safety properly down at the water park.
Because I pull a face back, well, sorry, I'm not tolerating it, I won't pull a face back. Right, it's like kids in a playground.
I know, exactly.
Nah, you're biggies. You're not letting Maxi finish, what I've just seen is a focus every month, and tell if I'm wrong, Maxi, they focus every month on, let's really focus on slips and tricks this month, and it refreshes the memories, and it gets a reading about health and safety more. We're not saying anything about not doing what we do at the minute, it's extra, and it's protecting our staff and public. But you let it finish, it should be able to explain that.
Am I right in what you were trying to say there, Maxi?
Yeah, give one.
Right.
Just don't antagonise people.
So we have a vote, then. I'm not antagonising people. Safe people keep coming in.
You're embarrassing everything.
Yes, you are, Maxi.
I guess you are.
We have health and safety checks regularly, all staff and...
This is why we're having all these accidents.
Right, are we just going to, are we just going to stop talking, are we just going to have a, are we just going to have a recess for ten minutes until we all calm down?
I'm calm already, but I'd like to know why.
Right, just a minute, I'm not taking any public questions, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm not taking...
No, it's health and safety, coming in from Wakefield, why is somebody like...
Right, can we have... We've got people talking, so we'll just wait.
You're right there, Mum.
I know, I am.
We'll just wait.
She's not listening.
Anne, Anne, from her, Anne. All, all it wants to be is respect, so we'll take ten minutes out, so everybody can stop talking.
Need respect from all of you.
You're belated, that one.
We, we have health and safety checks from staff that are all trained on health and safety. There's legislation pinned on all sites that we have, and your town clerk regulate those health and safety checks. And then every multi-year, we have a witness that does health and safety check, as well as Wakefield Council. So all we're doing is generating further work for council, which is going to be further expense. It's common sense, people are responsible for the health and safety.
We'll set you down a reserve.
So obviously, I work for a multinational company in chemical industry, top tier company, this is what industry does. It doesn't cost you anything, you go on H C website, they have a topic of the month, you print it off, you put it on your staff notice board.
Exactly.
And it does, it's common practice in business at this stage. It's all multinational, your company's probably do it on an agenda of the month, for chips and balls, or a... With a...
Even things like mental health.
Mental health, it costs you some paper and something, somewhere to print off, they just see your website.
But, but, but you... But you're talking about it.
At the end of the day, now, it's the council coming around for it and whatever happens.
Exactly, so all in favour?
Sure. What's prompted this, though?
It's good practice for anybody.
Are accidents higher than they have been in the past?
How many, how many times have we had a claim? How many times has people had accidents down there?
I don't, is it higher now?
How many, how many?
Is it higher now than it ever has been?
It's good practice, every, every company has it. It's good practice. And I'd rather be prepared.
Excuse me, can I just mention something? Shaun actually highlighted about a barrier that was...
Just vulgar, rude.
Right, oh, can we have a, yeah, we're just going to take a vote, all in favour?
And way, as it goes down there, right, and... Against, against health and safety.
I'm not against health and safety.
You are, but it is.
Right, so we'll move on now to item thirty, external audit, to consider and review following. Opinion to opt out of the smaller authorities' audit appointments to apply the external audit.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, there's a body, an item, is that?
Push your mouth to me.
Is that okay?
Little voice, there's a government body called Smaller Audit Appointments, and it appoints external auditors for all town and parish councils. They appoint them every five years, the last time they appointed them was twenty-seventeen, so the five-year cycle's now up. Now, I recommend that we stay with S triple A for this audit appointment, and it's good practice and it's bad cheap as well, Madam Chair, so I recommend that the council remains with Smaller Audit Appointments. And it's good practice and it's far cheaper as well, Madam Chair. So recommend that the council remains with Smaller Audit Appointments.
Well, I'll vote on your recommendation then, Alan. So all in favour? Yeah, carry on. The external audit report twenty twenty one, twenty two.
Just three things to report, Madam Chair, from the external audit report. There was a challenge from a parishioner to the council that was dismissed by the auditor. There were no other causes, no causes for concern from the auditor. There's one minor matter, which was about the setup for the trust fund for the centre. That the council should be sub-cooperative trustee rather than individual trustee.
Yeah.
Sorry, Chair. Can I just make really clear, because people are thinking, this audit is the yearly audit, always happens. This is not the external audit that we've asked for. And Alan, we've been talking this all, you know, there was a challenge. Do you, do we ever find out what that challenge was?
No. Well, yes and no. In this instance, no. There are two types of challenge. The challenge that comes through when the auditor sorts it out there and then, in which case, which is the case in this instance, where the auditor lets us know that there's been a challenge, but they've dealt with it. Which would suggest that it was a matter not worth bothering with. If it was a matter that was maybe half and half with bothering with, the second type, the auditor would then send the details of that challenge, not giving the person's name, but they would send the details to the council for the council to respond. That latter case isn't the case now to form the case.
Okay, so someone's questioned something.
It was so minor, they dealt with it straight away. All we know is there was a challenge, that they dealt with it and they invoiced us for it.
Do we need a challenge for that?
Yes.
Do we need a challenge for that?
Eight hundred and fifty two pounds.
Is that a challenge?
Well, do you do the flat fee for challenge? It depends on the amount of work the auditor does in the challenge.
Did I challenge because I'm a quick?
Yes.
And we're certainly on this other audit, any challenges on that have cost us a lot. Yes, and addition to.
Yes.
What we're arguing.
I just think it would be interesting to see if this challenge that's gone to this one, if we knew what it was, we could get our auditor to look at it as well, because then we can, if it's something that's definitely wrong, I'm just saying, but that's not an issue. We didn't even know what that issue was, do we?
The fact that the auditor hasn't even sent us the details suggests that it's so minor, it is quite natural with bothering with. If there was, if there was issue to it, it was sent to us.
And we'll never.
We know all the rules about it.
Madam Chair, we'll never find out who it was with that challenge, eh?
No, that's their right to do that, completely.
Because if we knew who it was, that person could get charged eight hundred and fifty two quid instead of the council.
No, I'm sorry, morally than I agree with legally, it's a parishioner's right to challenge the account to the auditor. But the auditor then challenged the council. So legally, you're wrong, morally, maybe you're right, but I'm not going to advise on morals, I'm going to advise on the law.
Thank you. So item fourteen, social media policy to consider policy in respect of the use of the council's social media, i.e. Facebook. Alan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy's been drafted and to members to approve it. I recommend approval.
Wait, just to cover off, sorry.
Yeah, all in favour? Oh, sorry.
I have a question. I don't, so do you want my question?
Respect of the policy.
So we've seen mostly the policy, I think we all agree with it, but just to be really clear, there is a separate policy or there's separate guidelines within employees' contracts that would cover employees covering it. Anything employees do is covered by their contracts, anything we do is covered by the code of contract.
Yes.
This policy is specifically about.
This policy is in regard to the town council's Facebook pages on the council. I'm not fully comfortable with it, it's purely about the council's social media, which is in effect its Facebook page. It's about having one Facebook account, one by the office, simple as that. And if, for example, the office staff or me put something dodgy on the Facebook account, you know, post or something, then we'd be trouble, it's community wise. So that's purely about the council's Facebook account. If a member of staff posted something on some other social media site or some other website, that will be covered by the staff handbook of staff contract. If a council did the same thing, put something inappropriate on another website or another blog or whatever kind of thing, that's covered by the code of conduct.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're all in favour. Are we all in favour? Yeah. Item fifteen, subject access request of the town clerk to report on anonymised subject access request and to authorise the response according to the.
Chair, if I can just go in there. Cathy mentioned this a few months ago. And I've looked at the I C O's response to what this new lady said. These requests shouldn't be coming to a full town council. As soon as the town clerk receives these requests, he's got twenty one days to give that person an answer. So what I suggest here is that we recommend that, you know, these are not for our agenda, because we're losing days. Like Cathy said, you could lose fourteen days from that lady for a subject access request or a freedom of information request into this council that the town clerks, you know, qualify to deal with without bringing it to us, because we'll never know what, you know, what if it don't come back.
I would assume that Alan's doing that work anyway.
If a member at public has a subject access request or a freedom of information request and it's handed in to town clerk, he should deal with it within that agreed twenty one days. If we're going to have a meeting for four weeks, like you suggested, and I've checked this out with I C O, the town clerk should deal with it. We are pretty on agenda bringing it to us.
So, sorry, but can I just clarify, Alan, when you receive these requests, you do start gathering the information? You just wait for us to go, yeah, you can send it, don't you?
Yeah, it is. But if, there are, there's some occasion, potentially, where there might be a four week gap. It can happen, but it's not very often. In those exceptional circumstances, I would respond to the person and then report it at the next meeting. If members can recall, when the policy was first adopted about F O I, I just reported them anonymously to every council meeting. But that did have gaps of four, five, six weeks, which wasn't on. So then the policy changed to when they come up to a committee meeting. So that covers the time issue.
Why did the policy change? Why did that policy change?
Because the council wanted to be aware, with F O I request, the council wanted to be aware, not if it was asking, because they can't, they can't know that, only I know that, but they wanted to be aware of what information was being asked for.
So what could the council have been suggesting then? Would need to be a motion, because it's a change to the standard orders, isn't it?
It's a policy change, so it can't be done on this item, but if it was for another agenda, the future can be done, yeah.
Yeah, we're bringing that up. Item sixteen, freedom of information request, the town clerk to report on anonymised freedom of information request received and to authorise respective responses according to the document.
And how it's similar, Madam Chair, this week or not?
So item seventeen, members Sunday, Kinsley and Fitzroy, to confirm location of refreshments after arriving on the Reef Lane in Kinsley. So there were three, which was the Liquid Spirit, the Coronation and the Kinsley Hotel. I mean, I propose that we do it, Liquid Spirit, because that is where the, the. The, you know, the British Legion, thank you, Jim, British Legion have been held. And I do believe the last one was at the Coronation Club.
That would be called British Legion, they'll want it at theirs.
Well, it's been put forward, so.
Liquid Spirit, I asked Dale, I said, would you be prepared to hold these refreshments? And he said he'd be more than willing. Now, that's the offer. That's the offer.
That one last year, it got cancelled.
It's not me, it's not me.
He had twelve bars at last minute last year, so why is he saying he's having it this year?
Well, it don't matter.
He really held it last year at last minute. He weren't interested. Didn't know, we're not British Legion anymore, where the Liquid Spirit, he says.
Does that really matter? The thing is, I think we've got a community, we've got three, we've got three public houses that are all part of Kinsley, so I'm proposing Liquid Spirit because Coronation Club, there's last year memorial, refreshments there. So if we swap it about and do the Liquid Spirit and then a year after do the Kinsley Hotel, and that is fair. And that gives everybody to be involved in it.
Where do you want it, Alan?
I'll have a finger again because the hotel's at last minute last year.
It weren't last minute, though, was it?
It was last minute.
It wasn't. I had two weeks to sort that.
Right, so I've proposed the.
Unless it means all at the same time, so members of one at the same time as the Kinsley one. So I'll not be done, I'll be done, bye bye.
Yeah, no, that's right. I mean, you can't be, you can't be all over. So I've proposed the Liquid Spirit. So all in favour of Liquid Spirit?
I don't, I don't know what to do here.
You're putting forward.
If it's going to cause that much trouble.
Why should it cause?
Or ill feeling.
You know, it's not. There's gotten a bit, there won't be any ill feeling whatsoever. Come to all that when it got cancelled.
We all not getting one.
No, well, no. Yeah, I see, that's how it feels.
Can we have a vote again? Yeah. So.
Councilor, you're going to vote on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going to vote on that.
Yeah, the other proposal is the Coronation.
Coronation.
Well. I think.
I'm not staying, Alan.
Well, that's just a matter. Don't worry, they're not in Spain.
Yeah, so it's Liquid Spirit then.
Good job. That's worked.
Item eighteen, memorial bench, past councillors to consider having a memorial bench for past councillors, Hemsworth Water Park. Yeah.
I was approached by Harry Hall, Council Harry Hall's wife, she'd liked to put a plaque on one of the benches. And I thought it'd be nice if we could have one for all past councillors, really.
Yeah, very great.
So we're just talking about plaques, not brand new benches?
Yeah.
It's plaques on it, isn't it?
It's a good idea.
It's about the memories, don't it? You could put plaques on a bench or something like that for all of them and have a bit of a service there, like they could do a bit of a service on that for the memories there.
Remember staying around about a plaque.
I know what you're on about, but we could pull it in.
Well, let's change more of the top, though, isn't it?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
And we can come back to that one. So are we all in favour of that? Yeah, we're all in favour.
So can I tell, this is all that you can sort of back out? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, if we want one, isn't it? We're not just going to put everybody's names on.
They put it on.
Yeah, they, she's willing to get her own plaque and everything, it's the little ones all.
As long as they get one chapter.
Separate bench on that.
You know.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as they get one chapter, you have to be careful with them.
Item nineteen, council should address the public. Members of the public and the press to be at school with public consideration, business and confidential nature as per public policy missions to meetings at nineteen sixty. All major, good evening, safe journey.
Thank you all for coming again tonight.